I can.
Okay, we'd like to call to order the Town of Niskuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Ms. Bergami, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Here.
Ms. Strain?
Here.
Mr. Khan?
Here.
Ms. Bolovski?
Here.
Ms. Gomes?
Here.
Ms. Gold?
Present.
Mr. Billen Calhoun? Chairman Darpino.
Okay, next up is the approval of the April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. Could I get a motion?
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Khan.
Second.
Uh, second by Ms. Gold. Any comments or corrections? Okay, I had none. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, any opposed? Okay, um, April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes were approved with one abstention. Next up is the May fifth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. Make it a motion.
Moved.
Uh, moved by Mr. Khan, seconded by Ms. Bolovski. Are there any comments or corrections? Okay. I had one, uh, simple typo on line two ninety-three. Uh, we should remove the letter S from Mr. Khan's name.
Oh.
That was it.
Affirmed by that?
That was it.
Sorry.
Okay, um, I get a motion to modify the May fifth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes.
Moved.
Uh, moved by Mr. Khan. I will second that. All in favor of the modification, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And one abstention, okay? And a motion to approve the May twenty twenty-fifth meeting minutes as amended. Mr. Khan?
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Khan?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Gold. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention, okay? And the May fifth, twenty twenty-five amended meeting minutes are approved. Next up is public hearings. Our first public hearing is on three ninety State Street, a site plan review and special use permit at Seventeenth South Fagan Ave. And twenty-five South Fagan Ave, and a portion of thirty-three South Fagan Ave in conjunction with an explanation from the existing business at three nine zero zero State Street in the Town of Niskuna. Ms. Bergami, could you please read the notice?
This is hereby given pursuant to zoning ordinance of the Town of Niskuna, New York, and the applicable provisions of the town law of the state of New York. A public hearing will be held by the Planning Board and Zoning Commission of the Town of Niskuna in the Town Board Meeting Room at One Niskuna Circle on the nineteenth day of May, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. To consider an application from Vincent Salvangi, agent for Matthews Kia of Schenectady for a site plan review and special use permit at Seventeenth South Fagan Avenue, sixty dot nineteen dash four dash twenty, twenty-five South Fagan Avenue, sixty dot nineteen dash four dash twenty-one, and a portion of thirty-three South Fagan Avenue at sixty dot nineteen dash four dash twenty-two. In conjunction with an expansion of the existing business at thirty-nine hundred St. Street, sixty dot nineteen dash four dash sixteen dot one in the Town of Niskuna. All properties are located within the C H Commercial Highway Zoning District. A copy of the site plan application will be inspection at the Planning Department in the Niskuna Town Hall and can be viewed at the town website under the Public Hearings tab and will be shown electronically during the public hearing. If you wish to express an opinion regarding the public hearing, you may do so at the above-mentioned time and place. If you cannot be present, you may request a virtual login to the meeting by emailing L Robertson at Niskuna dot org or calling five one eight three eight six four five three one. Or you may set forth your opinion in a letter which will be made part of the permanent record. Please note, there is a five-minute time limit for each speaker at the public hearing and submitted letters will not be read out loud at the public hearing, but such letters will be included in the minutes and added to the record. The Planning Board and Zone Commission of the Town of Niskuna will heal all persons interested during the aforementioned public hearing. By order of the Planning Board of the Town of Niskuna, New York, David Darpino, Chair, Chairman, Planning Board and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Bergami. Okay, the public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak about this project and solely this project at thirty-nine hundred State Street, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Melissa Cummins, own and reside at twenty-six South Fagan Ave. I'm here tonight to voice my concern and strongly oppose the thirty-nine hundred State Street project. Um, first, this, this site plan will considerably lower the value, uh, and appeal my property. It will remove, um, residential affordable housing. Parked cars will consume two out of four sides of my home. No one is in the market to buy a home that's fifty percent surrounded by parked cars. Uh, this project, uh, was denied previously as it did not offer appropriate sidewalks for the Safe Streets Committee. The plan also proposed, uh, to remove a very large pine spruce tree that protect, is protected by the D E C as it has nesting birds of prey. The light pollution from State Street lot is absolutely out of control. Uh, I am forced to buy blackout curtains for my bedroom because the light shines so bright in my eye all night long. Um, I was under the impression that these lights would be dimmed, lowered, uh, or maybe even pointed down, but no, no such thing has occurred. Um, will this new lot have lighting, light pollution, an intercom system? All day and night, I hear, inserting here, you have a call on line one. Talk about disruptive. Uh, my favorite part of the day is when they intentionally set off car alarms to find cars all day and all night. Power to my home is connected to the pole on my property, which, um, is then connected to both of these homes, um, in this proposition. Will my power be interrupted? Uh, most importantly, this project will just endanger the safety of my children. Uh, the proposed entrance to this lot will be directly in front of my home. I have three small children. They are nine, five, and three. I have two driveways on both sides of my property. Um, on this site plan, um, there is images of my larger driveway. Uh, there is concrete cement barriers in this picture. Uh, those, uh, barriers, please let the record show, do not exist. I do not have barriers of any kind in my driveway. The previous owners, uh, of my address, they, they had barriers. They owned a big construction company and they had the, the means to have those. I do not have those. Um, and I do not frankly want any barriers, um, as it, it would, you know, prevent me from moving things in and out of my driveway. Um, and also I don't have the heavy equipment to move and relocate barriers. Um, I use this lot for my cars, trailers, uh, my camper when it's home, uh, and my children, they play in this lot. They play basketball, ride their bikes. Uh, they, they, they do a lot there and there is no sidewalk for them to play. Uh, they get on the bus across the street, uh, which is where the large driveway is located, um, in the proposed lot that the house will be torn down. Uh, as I said, there's no sidewalk and we often wait on the corner of my largest driveway and then we cross when the bus arrives. There was, and I say was, a school bus stop sign there, but it is not there anymore. It is on the ground where it's been for months. I've called, I've sent pictures, I've asked for it to be replaced and it still has not. The car dealership parks their cars on the other side of the street next to my driveway, blocking all of the grass. My children cannot wait there either. I've sent pictures of all of these things to Ms. Robertson, so she has them if anyone's interested after the meeting of all of these things. I imagine that one of those double-decker fifty-three-foot-long transport trucks knocked the sign down entering the reconditioning lot. The now new unloading spot is in the reconditioning lot. In the past, they were unloading directly onto South Fagan, which is not safe for anyone. Um, since they began unloading in the lot, I've noticed that they've come all hours of the night. Uh, one, two, three A M. Clanking, banging chains. And unfortunately, I've had to call the police on several occasions because it's incredibly loud. And I feel that having to call the police just to generate a report is just nothing but a senseless waste of resources. I, if I have my windows open, it startles me awake. And as one could imagine, my sleep is often interrupted by my three children, but to be interrupted by unloading cars in the dead of night is just totally not acceptable. Um, with this new proposal, I can only imagine that the, the fifty-foot, fifty-three-foot-long trucks will be driving into the proposed new lot, which it entrance will be directly in front of my home. There's absolutely nothing safe about this plan for my family. There is nothing stopping the haulers from trying to course correct their turning into the larger lot of my driveway and possibly harm my children. There are many private property signs located on my lot that are visible to anyone. And over the last five years that I've lived here, I've had to ask many cars and trucks to get off my property, even the town vehicles. This unauthorized activity has caused my driveway to deteriorate rapidly. Last summer, we had to fight with city personnel to remove their vehicles from my property because they were parking in it to fix a water main break not associated with my property. I do have video of this as well. And the last Town Board meeting I was here, I requested that my driveway be repaired. It has not. The water main has been a huge issue itself. I'm sure that the water and the water used from the reconditioning lot has contributed to this as well. A few years ago, I did have to replace my pipes to the main. And since my pipes were replaced, it has created at least three, maybe four breaks down the line, one after another, causing me to be without water, without notice, trying to make bottles for my children. And as you can imagine, that's impossible to do without water. The flushing machine, which was placed on my property only because I caused such a stink, um, isn't working appropriately. All of the sinks and toilets continue to be stained brown after only a few days after, um, I've cleaned them. I did see that they were flushing the machine today, um, but what's the protocol, the procedure for these, for these flushings? How often is the water being tested? Um, as there must be, um, stagnation from leaving excess water to accumulate here because it is the end of the line. There is a fence that's owned by Kia that borders my property and it has been down for years now. The fence has nails sticking out and it was laying in my driveway. We have since relocated it into their property. Um, however, it's a challenge to keep my children off of it while they're waiting for the bus. Please fix this or remove it. I've also emailed photos of this. A porcelain sink was removed and placed by the road where it still sits today, uh, and that was, um, last year. I'm not sure who they thought was going to be picking this up or collecting it. They don't even have garbage cans or pickup, but it is still sitting there today. I sent a photo of that as well. The dealership continues to park on the grass. I already said that. I'm tired. Excuse me. Again, um, none of this is safe. Uh, sadly, um, I will share that my entire family has been plagued with chronic mouth ulcers requiring treatment. Um, why this is happening is anyone's best guess. Uh, is it the water? Uh, my oldest son is suffering tremendously and he now has a team of forty-five plus physicians stretching over three states to determine the cause. My children's safety, health, and well-being is my number one priority. And as a registered nurse, I'm trained to be an advocate and I will continue to use my voice and to best advocate nurse and mother my children for the rest of my life. And I'm asking for just kind, considerate neighbors and Matthews Kia has been none of those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present wishing to speak at the public hearing? Hey Laura, did we receive any correspondence on this?
Yes, I received two emails from Ms. Cummins with, uh, pictures that she mentioned and most of what she just read. So I'll include those in the minutes for the next meeting.
Okay. Um, excuse me. You have to. You have to, you have to approach the podium.
Here the last time because no one survived.
Okay, there's a, there's a, there's a notification process that the town has to follow in the protocols. So if they, okay, thank you.
Did you receive yours? No, because we just do a two hundred-foot buffer around the edges of all the properties.
They didn't see it, but they could see this.
I don't.
The one elderly lady that was a foreigner on the side and I, I'm listening, I don't know her name. She's in her eighties and she doesn't walk, so she said she wasn't.
Okay, thank you.
Neighbors on the upper street would receive them?
Yeah, I mean, two hundred feet goes pretty fast. Um, but all of the houses, backyards that are but the parking lot should get it. The neighbor across the street, but some of the other ones may be beyond the two hundred feet.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Right. Last call for the public hearing. Okay, seeing as no one else, we're going to close the public hearing. Moving on, privilege of the floor is open. Anyone wishing to speak on any planning or zoning matter in the Town of Niskuna, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Privilege of the floor is open. Okay, looks like no one present for privilege of the floor. Laura, did we receive any correspondence or any emails?
Not for privilege of the floor.
Okay. Okay, so seeing as there's no one here for privilege of the floor, we will close privilege of the floor. Next up is unfinished business. We have none, so we'll move on to new business. First up is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen. A resolution for site plan approval for a new guardhouse and a new patio at twenty-six ninety Balltown Road. Project leads are Ms. Bolovski and myself. Now therefore be it resolved that this planning board hereby determines that this project will not have a significant effect on the environment and hereby directs the town planner to file a negative declaration. And be it further resolved that this planning board and zoning commission finds that the site plan application referenced above meets the requirements of the zoning code and previous site plan approvals. And therefore hereby approves this site plan with the following conditions. One, prior to site disturbance, the applicant shall participate in a pre-construction meeting with the Town of Niskuna and shall address any concerns raised by the town or the town-designated engineer. Two, prior to the pre-construction meeting, any engineering and draining concerns will be addressed to the satisfaction of the town superintendent, water, sewer, and engineering. Any questions or concerns raised by the town-designated engineer will be addressed by the applicant in a formal letter to the town. And any minor changes to the final site plans will be addressed to the satisfaction of the town planning department. Three, prior to site disturbance, the plan shall be modified to reflect agreed-upon decisions of the pre-construction meeting, if any, and distributed as required to the town. Final site plan shall be submitted to the town labeled for construction. And four, in accordance with chapter one eighty of the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Ordinance of the Town of Niskuna, the applicant shall put in place soil erosion and sediment control measures sufficient to stabilize disturbed areas. These measures shall be satisfactory to the superintendent of water, sewer, and engineering and shall remain in place until such time as natural vegetation has been successfully established. Make it a motion? I'll move.
Okay, I'll second.
Uh, seconded by Ms. Bolovski. Representative from the applicant here?
Hi, Matt Savoy back in representing GE Vernova.
Okay, um, so you've heard the resolution and some of the conditions. Are you, are you good with everything that's been stated thus far?
Everything's been stated seems reasonable. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, good. Um, open up the discussion. Any concerns with any of the conditions on the resolution? Seeing as how there's none, Ms. Bergami, oh, go ahead.
Could I do the, um, I'm just gonna add, uh, language to clarify the secret determination?
Sure, okay, go ahead.
So under the first resolved where it says the planning board hereby determines the project will not have a significant effect on the environment. Mr. Millsbaw pointed this out and he's correct. It should, um, it should, um, classify the action. So I'm just proposing to say resolve that this planning board hereby determines that this is a type-one action, declares itself the lead agency, and that this project will not have a significant effect on the environment. And hereby determines to file the negative declaration. And that, um, the C A C looked at it, the C A C memo is attached, they did fill out the part two. Um, they didn't identify anything as arising above us, uh, no to small impact. And they did actually think that with some of the native plantings that are proposed, that they may be increasing some of the habitat and, um, if anybody had any questions about that seeker recommendation, just let me know.
Okay. So we'll pu, we'll put a motion that the first resolved will have the first sentence read that this planning board hereby determines this project is a type-one classification. The planning board is the lead agency and this project will not have a significant effect on the environment and hereby directs the town planner to file a negative declaration.
Exactly so, yeah.
I will make a motion to amend that resolution. Make it a second.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Strain, okay. All in favor of the amended resolution, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Back to discussion.
Just to say thank you very much.
Okay.
Um, and looking forward to continue to partner with the town and then building apartment next, so.
Okay, great. Okay, so seeing how there's no further discussion from the board members here, we are now going to vote on the modified, um, twenty twenty-five dash thirteen resolution. Ms. Bergami, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme?
Aye.
Ms. Strain?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Ms. Bolovski?
Aye.
Ms. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Aye.
Chairman Darpino?
Aye, resolution passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, you're welcome. Next up is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, a resolution for lot line adjustment to thirty-four eighteen Albany Street, one ninety-one Fillmore Ave. I am the project lead. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission does hereby grant final lot line adjustment approval for thirty-four eighteen Albany Street and one ninety-one Fillmore Ave as shown on the aforementioned one-page survey drawing with the following conditions. One, prior to the recording, the plat, the final lot line adjustment map and recording documents, including the associated deeds and easements, shall be sent to the planning department for their review. With approval by the town attorney, any changes, additions, or deletions requested shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the planning department before printing the milars. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Khan.
Second.
Uh, seconded by Ms. Gold. Is there a representative from the applicant online?
Dave, there is not. They had a conflict and weren't able to make the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Henry. So we'll open up to discussion. Um, to recap, I think that we've looked at this a couple of times. Zoning Board of Appeals made their determination on the lot lines and everything looks to be the same as the previous package. Good adjustment and should be helpful in the future. Okay.
It's a more logical design.
Mm-hmm. All right, good. Seeing as there's no further discussion, Ms. Bergami, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme?
Aye.
Ms. Strain?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Ms. Bolovski?
Aye.
Ms. Gomes?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Aye.
Chairman Darpino?
Aye, resolution passes. Okay, and we'll reach out to the applicant to let them know. Okay, that finishes up resolutions. Next up is recommendation to the Z B A. This is twenty-six ninety Balltown Road, GE Vernova. This is a recommendation to the Z B A for new signage requiring an area variance. Ms. Bolovski is going to take the lead on this. I have to recuse myself. Turn it over to you.
Thanks. Hi, so, um, can you begin by talking to us about the additional signage? And explain where that came, kind of how that came about? The fifth sign.
Which sign?
The fifth sign.
Which one is the fifth sign?
The welcome center sign. There were four that we were, that we discussed and voted on and then.
There's one on each side of the welcome center. There's one on the front and one on the back is where the additional sign is.
Right, there's a new one that was added since the last meeting.
Yeah, the new one that's added from the last meeting, the board only took action on four sign. It's labeled G on there. The visitor center front, yes.
W.
Yep, so the, it's the, the front, as you come up the road from Balltown, you'll see the front. And then if you go around the back of the building, there's a sign on the back also, but you can enter from either way. So it's the front and back of the visitors, visitor center as a sign.
Okay, so the board will know that that is a change from what we discussed and voted on and that puts us into a fifth sign that would require a variance as well, correct?
The overall square footage also increases because it's an additional facade sign. It actually increases by the entirety of this facade sign, which I think is a hundred and ninety-two square feet.
So I don't know if someone can speak to, that was a late addition, an oversight, a later determination that it was required. I mean, it's a pretty significant location.
I believe it was a late addition and an oversight all, all at the same time. Um, so it did come in after the fact, then it was missed on the last meeting.
Can you, well, can you show?
I've almost got my regular computer working.
I know.
But there's the monument sign. There's the guard sign and we took action on all of those. That's the D A C building, which is the biggest one that we also took action on. This is the rear, which we took action on. And this is the new one that we did not take action on. It's sitting between the D A C building and the new office building. And, um, it's here.
So non-lit, um, correct?
Is it behind the glass or in front of what?
In front of the glass.
Exterior, right? Exterior to the glass, but non-lit.
So I would have to default to Tom as if it was in his package or not. I can't speak to that, but I can speak to more of the intention if you.
Okay.
So you saw the, the sign earlier in the back of the building, right? If, if you've noticed the parking on the site, that's where ninety-eight percent of the parking is going to be. So obviously it makes sense for us to have signage there. The signage on the front of the building, which you just, yep, that's the rear of the building. The sign that you see in the front of the building there, if you think about the property and the large sign that we're proposing for the top of building one or the DAC building or whatever it ends up being fancy called by branding in the future. That sign's kind of your, your guide, your beacon as you come in, right? Think about once you, you're a visitor and you parked your car, you'll never see that again, right? So this is more your eye level, if you will, welcome sign as you come into the facility that you actually s, see as you approach on foot.
Yes.
Versus the high signs really more designed as you approach on vehicle or car and you see that as you turn it and park your vehicle.
So it's replicating the same sign that's on the DAC building, you're saying. It's just a different line of sight. It's not really a wayfinding in that it's just repeating.
It's, yeah, it's a different sign to your point, not, not backlit or halo lit, on the glass, exterior mounted. Um, think of basically just a, a silver frame or aluminum frame sign.
So just, yeah, a little bit. Like you said, if you're on foot, that other sign's fifty feet in the air.
Right, yep. I walked the property.
You'll walk right under, but then you'll see this, which will, it is wayfinding, it'll guide you to the door.
And then Matt, can you speak to then the additional? So this doesn't replace the building name signage? And just speak to the, the additional two building name signs and their purpose for sort of hierarchy, if it's a hierarchy from DAC to this, yeah.
Yep, so I believe the two signs you're speaking of are more the name of the building versus the company name. Again, they kind of are coming through as, uh, almost call them placeholders, right? So I think what AJ's signs has provided has significant American, significant characters, future GE Vernova building name. Um, I'm hoping they can figure out something within that many characters, but they, those are then designed for the built, wayfinding to the building specifics.
Are they a wayfinding? Is there a purpose wayfinding then or build name, like naming the building?
So for example, on the left there, you see the small red sign, right?
Right.
That building stage called Building six-ten, we'll use that name as, as an example. If you're a visitor or park and I say, hey, come to Building six-ten, you wouldn't go through that double doors, right? The idea would be that sign draws you towards that entrance over there. Same thing with, again, we're calling it Building one right now. Very well has a better branded name in the future. Hey, come towards this building once you park your car. So it's wayfinding, bring in the people to those destinations. Um, obviously there is some, you know, marketing and branding type i, idea behind it as well, but you know, once you park at the facility, it's really wayfinding towards which of these buildings you're going to be going to.
Any other questions from the members of the board? I, I, just one more. The fact that the welcome sign, I mean, I'm guessing the majority of your business is business hours. I know we talked about evening, some evening event on the patio, but, um, these are internally lit, the building signs?
Yeah, they're halo lit, so just like the GE logo where it, that'll often have a softball around them.
Okay.
I guess I would like to comment. I mean, it's, you, you know, we're all taking a little minor surprise, small little letters on the addition of the fifth sign. We understand in terms of front and back of the building, welcome center and the wayfinding inside. Yeah, I do want to say that one of the reasons why, you know, we did have a discussion last time, we'll have to address the sign today. You know, this board is typically pretty firm on signs, right? One of the main reasons why I think that we reached the conclusions we reached last time in terms of the recommendation to the Z B A is fundamentally because this is a standalone campus. It's set back from the public in many ways, right? Definitely from the street, Balltown Road. And to some extent, right, maybe all but one of the signs are going to be hidden from anyone that's on the bike path. But I just wanted to, you know, to put on the record that, you know, the, the signage on the property in terms of size, just by the plain fact of requiring so many variances, is just highly non-compliant with the code. But the reasoning we've used about a standalone facility, right, I think is just something that, you know, it's there in the record. I just wanted to reiterate. That's the extent of it. It's a lot of signage. Lot of size. Therefore, requiring all those variances, this board can make whatever recommendations it sees fit going forward on the fifth sign. But, um, it's just something I think it's worth putting on the, on, you know, putting on the floor.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
That said, it makes sense to have a sign at the main welcome center of a campus of this size. I mean, I think you've demonstrated that there is a wayfinding purpose to most of these and that you are addressing the needs of the. and that you are addressing the needs of the visitors both upon arrival. And then, as you said, once they exit and are moving on foot to the various locations. Any other questions or concerns about this? It does add additional square footage to what, you know, the request is. But I also think this is a little unique in terms of it being off the road, not visible to the community and attempting to direct people around a pretty sizable campus.
I agree. I mean, I'd, I'd add that you're, you're, you're not just dealing with consumer uh, wayfinding, but I know that GE does a lot with building numbers and internal folks are looking for a number and external might be looking for some brand recognition. You know, so I, I think that all the things that were very well explained play into that. You have, you have a larger population of folks using those signs than most would.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or concerns? So do we feel comfortable revoting? We, we need to go through again.
So we prepared it actually as a recommendation on the, on the five sign package rather than the four. So that the zoning board would see it all together as one.
Yep.
Cause that's how the appeal goes. So the original findings are in there, and then Leslie had a question about this too, but we just sort of grayed out the original findings. Uh, they may still be completely relevant, um, but that would just give you a place to decide to start.
It made for difficult reading.
Yeah, but, right, but I mean, we understood the intent and hopefully. So I, I mean, the simplest thing to do would be to just add the fifth sign to the conclusions we did. I don't think any of the conclusions, I read through them again. I don't think any conclusions materially change with the advent, right? As long as the town doesn't impose an upper limit to the number of variances that can be allowed, which we don't, right? I don't think anything materially changes from those conclusions we had relative to the questions we asked in the recommendation.
And there's really no impact to the travelers going on Balltown. It's far enough back and that different angle, and so I don't think it's going to affect them at all.
So procedurally, do we go through each piece again, or can we just vote as a group to adopt what we adopted, but for the five sign package?
I'm okay with them just saying, yeah.
Sorry, I messed that up. My head's turned the wrong way.
The easy way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I recommend that's what we do.
So then we'll, we'll just vote to reaffirm for the reasons previously stated. The comprehensive plan affects the suitability of use um, and our overall recommendation.
Yeah, so the the planning board voted that the signs have no effect on the comprehensive plan. It's a standalone campus well back from the road. It's a general character of the IR research and development zoning. Suitability of use, the board voted seven zero. Host areas were suitable as proposed. And then the board voted seven zero to recommend the ZBA approve the variance.
So we'll just call, do we call the roll, or do you do the, uh, matter of ayes and nays for this?
I would do, um-
We should do.
Oh, do you want to do the roll?
No, I think we should do the roll. So, so, so the, so the motion, so I think the motion is really to
Adopt this one.
To adopt this.
Yeah.
With the five sign package as the recommendation to the ZBA.
Do you want to make that motion?
Sure. And I'll also move the motion for adopting the board's conclusions concerning the comprehensive plans, suitability of use and recommendation to the ZBA as of our last meeting, which was on May 5th, 2025, for today's meeting for the updated five sign package. And I move that motion to the floor.
I'll second for the reasons stated by my colleague.
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Ms. Strain.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Ms. Blavsky.
Aye.
Ms. Gomes.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman Derpino. Oh, you're recused.
Oh, Alex.
I'm recused.
Mr. Bill and Calhoun.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
The motion passes again, and um, we'll proceed as we were prior to the additional submission. Okay?
Clarification. That sends us to ZBA annex, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
We'll work at your office to get that.
Um, actually, be, you were scheduled for the May 21st meeting. You know, prior to the change in package, so we have time to update the recommendation, so you'll be there act- actually in two days.
Making that note, thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Great. All right, thank you, Ms. Blavsky. Okay, next up is a recommendation to the ZBA for 2331 Troy's Connectivity Road. This is the Heritage Group. Uh, recommendation for a new monument sign. I'll be turning this one over to Mr. Khan as I have to recuse myself on this as well.
Thank you, Chairman Walsh. And uh, thank, thank you very much for providing from the last time drawings of the compliance sign and uh, the sign that you're currently proposing, and also for the uh, 3D rendering. I think we can hopefully accomplish this today in terms of the recommendations to the ZBA. I guess the first comment is the compliance sign doesn't look that bad. If we can go lower to the renderings.
That one.
Yeah, so I mean, you could flash them. Let's, let's do the previous one. So the, the previous one, this one is a sign as proposed, which will require variances. And this one is a compliant sign.
Can you flash him again? I would. Can I comment?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I mean, this, this is for the board to, to talk, right?
No, I think it's, it's a great flash example. It's helpful. I'm gonna probably cite on the circumstance of the environment. Uh, faster cars movement, uh, looking beyond a car, over a car from the um, the other opposing direction of traffic. If it does assist in some way there, uh, which I think it would, because it does look a little low to me on the flash, then I do think it's justifiable in my personal opinion, but I, I think you're bringing up a good point. It doesn't really look that different sitting here looking.
Right, and recognize that that can be a pro or a con. Right?
Right.
So it doesn't look, the compliance sign doesn't look any different from the proposed, not too much, right? Um, the only one comment I want to make, and for your folks who drive that frequently, the, the way that building is uh, built, it looks only like it's one story on this view. So that sign can be visually fairly high, large compared to the building. Right? It's, it's a little bit hard to detect in the renderings, but I think you can, because you can actually see the roof line of the building, especially Laura, if you go back to the, to the non-compliant sign. Right, yeah. So just take a look at where that sign ends up relative to the roof line of the building.
And that's the neighbor's building, right?
No, that is the building, no, that is the Heritage Group.
That is the actual building.
That is their building, yeah. Yeah. So there, the road goes slopes up a hill going westward. So you kind of have, and then the building is, it's a two-story building at least.
From the back.
From, from the back, but, right, it's on a, yeah, walkout basement.
I actually think the point that was made about ensuring the visibility if snow piles up or vegetation is a good one. It also made me think that it may be, this may be a sign of things to come because much like um, drive-throughs have been adjusted, so many more people are now sitting higher in their vehicle that it is actually affecting sightlines um, when people are driving. So I feel like when you add that to the speed that people unfortunately travel at that part of Route 7, having it closer to a natural sightline is for the, for the minimal difference, I think the benefit is, is worth making. All right.
Any other comments on this from the planning board? Leslie or Nancy?
I just, I, I think that I, I appreciate the, the comments about, I mean, I've lived there for 50 plus years going by that property. And I'm, I'm not sure that I see, I see the the reasoning in that. I just think the compliant one is, is more appropriate. That's, those are my thoughts.
Just because of the height? Nancy, or?
I just, I think that um, I think if you start changing signs, I think this is going to set a precedent. And I think people are going to say, well, their sign is tall, why shouldn't mine? And I understand that we look at each, every individual case individually, but I, I just, I, I'm not sure that I see the reason to, to kick it up higher. My thoughts.
So we have three more board members who are present. You know, I, I think before we call for a vote, let's just try to see where we all are parked with this.
So I think my concern with, with the compliance sign is, is actually just eligibility, to be completely honest. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of lettering on it, and you definitely can't read the bottom, especially if you're going fast. Like, you might see group, quite honestly, but I honest, I, I would say that's going to be even tight with the smaller sign, personally. So, I mean, it is, you know, in the renderings, it does look fairly similar, but if, if you don't know what the Heritage Group is, then you're not reading risk management quickly, in my opinion.
Yeah, I, I know, it's, so, so you can go, Leslie's still thinking. Look, again, what we're doing here, procedure-wise, I'm just trying to get a sense, currently as temporary chair of this, where our vote's going to end up before we actually take the vote. Right, so.
So I had noted last meeting that I thought with the tendency for snow to pile up and the vehicles being often much higher than they used to be, that the higher sign really made more sense. And my opinion has not changed.
And I think with the snow, I don't, knowing what the snowbanks are like there, I don't think that would make that much of a difference. You get really significant snowbanks when, when the plows are plowing. And I'm not sure that I'm not sure that height would make that much difference.
You mean it'd be covered anyway?
Yeah, I, I think so.
SWE, any comments from you?
Yeah, is there feedback? I'm going to make sure I'm at.
Need some time.
A little bit. I, I think I said last meeting that um, I was in favor of the larger sign, particularly because of the speed of um, that road. People sitting higher. Um, and I, I think it would allow people to not have to slow down and potentially be distracted trying to find the sign or read the sign.
Okay, so I think based on the feedback, you know, a current vote on this would actually I think there's been some good arguments that have been articulated for the effect in a comprehensive plan question, or the effect in suitability of use, where primarily it'll be a lot of the factors that we present, and then potentially from what you've heard in the board. So I think, you know, unless we have anything else to discuss, right? The, the only other thing that was floating around in my mind was something we discussed the last time. I don't think we need to get into it here now, and that, that you could have actually taken just one variance and it would have been the height like you have as proposed. But the written part of the sign would stay as compliant. Right? Is, is that an optionality that board members would like to look at, or is that something that we feel now we can just vote on what the two are in front of us today? Right, you know, Mr. Bill and Calhoun's argument that you know, the writing on the smaller compliant written part of the sign is, you know, challenging anyway?
I think if you're raising it to increase visibility, the additional width uh, is helpful and also is you know, from a sort of bigger picture, uh, providing enough white space around the lettering is also important so that the line, the signage that we're approving looks good.
All right, one additional thing, and I think it looks right, but you know, you can tell me, the sign isn't going to block people trying to come out of Van and Daga and go westward, right? I think it's setback enough.
It's setback, because it's beyond the sidewalk.
Right.
You're, you're going to pull enough to see around it without a problem.
All right, so maybe we could um, let's move forward to vote.
The other one, which I think we all agreed was better, is that it's internally lit.
Yes, I think we're all agreed on that variance, the internal lit one.
We've had issues with the external lights, like blinding vehicles at night.
Right, so, so let's be clear, thank you Laura for that, right? So there's three variances we're seeking for. Um, I think we can handle all three of them together, right? I'll take them in reverse order as to how they appear in something somewhere. The internally lit one, and I think we probably have good agreement there as a board. The height of the sign and the um, you know, the, the, the area of the written portion of the sign. We're clear? And then, so at the end of the day, in terms of our drawings and reference, we are voting on option A as an internally lit sign. All right? So-
I'd just like to add that when we say the height of the sign, I think it's the height from the bottom edge of the sign to grade.
That, that, that's right. Thank you, Clark, right? It's the height of that black portion, right, from the bottom of the sign. Right, to that area of the larger piece, right? Yep. The, the 42 inches. Right, 42 inches versus 24 on the height. And it's written somewhere, but I can't see it, whatever the math is. Right, 80 by 44 instead of 72 by 40 on the square footage. Right, those are the two um, that's the, the second and third variances we're going after, right? I think you've got it there, all right, so. Yeah, the height is an 18-inch variance, 42 minus 24, and the area is 24.4 square feet instead of, you know, requiring a 4.4 square foot variance. Right? Instead of 20 square feet. Okay? So if no other discussion, let's proceed to our questions, right? The effect on the comprehensive plan of the option A larger sign as proposed is just described. You think there the answer is no effect on the comprehensive plan, right? So.
No, I would, I would agree with that.
Okay, so making the statement that no effect in a comprehensive plan, all in favor of no effect in a comprehensive plan? I think we vote this by ayes, right, and raise a vens?
Yeah.
So, aye.
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 Okay. All right? And again, I'm sorry.
When we're filling it out for the zoning board, is there anything specific you want us to include under the effect on the comprehensive plan? Or just listen to the discussion?
No, the key thing is the sign. And a lot of these arguments are going to be made, I think, for the second one.
Okay, you just want to-
Yeah, 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 is that, you know, this, this business is allowed a sign
Okay.
here, right, and so there's nothing relative to the zoning, right? Yeah. Right.
Parcel is all. Yeah, and I might just notice, just, I mean, I would say that generally speaking, though, the comprehensive plan is very strongly in favor of keeping the residential neighborhood on Route 7. So I, I would just note that you know, large expansions of signs would be not reported on the comprehensive plan, but a 4.4 square foot sign like Mike would be okay. I, I would-
Yeah, the, the magnitude of it, okay, with the justifications, I think we'll articulate on the next-
With the next one.
Yep. Okay. All right, uh, suitability of use. So the general consensus statement leads to the planning board saying that there is, that this is a suitable use for this larger sign at this location. Right, so we're voting here for the affirmative. All right, so all those in favor that this is a suitable use of this larger sign in this location? Notify by saying aye?
Aye.
Actually, I'm going to say nay. But that um, that vote carries relative to suitable use.
And so the notes in that would be the- And so the notes in that would be the speed of the corridor.
The speed of the corridor, the snowbank.
Snowbank.
Snowbank. Um, the line of sight arguments about bright cars.
Okay. And then I think we should even add the, um, blinding of the external light there.
That's right. Yes, definitely on that one.
And then do you wanna add anything for the de- the dissenting part?
Yeah, for the sending part is that I believe as a dissenting vote that the compliance sign looked proper based on the rendering that was shown. And the key argument there being the building being a one-story facade at that point. Right? To really get that line of sight, not to have the sign appear as towering where the building is concerned.
Okay, got it.
I think it's suitable because those factors combined together, I think, make a safer sign than the compliant one.
Excuse me, can I retract my vote to a nay please?
On which one? Both of them?
No, I just the last, the suitability.
Okay, so it'll be five, two?
Suitability. Suitability.
Under suitability, yes. So.
Yeah, so five, two.
Yeah. And obviously, uh, Sue, you're, you're saying I on the phone, right? Or to both? Actually, so what was your vote, just to be clear on both of these? Suitability to comprehensive plan?
Mine was I.
And to, I'm, and I'm sorry, affecting conversation and suitability of use?
Also I.
Okay.
Yeah, so five, two.
Five, two. All right, for two, so five I's and two nays. And Lori, you think you have enough for both the I and the dissenting opinions?
Yep, I got it.
Perfect. And so finally, the. I'm sorry.
I just, Laura, do you wanna add your four point four square feet under suitable suitability of use?
Oh, actually, I, yeah, I, I mentioned that under effect on the comprehensive plan because it more to do with the residential corridor recommendations. Yeah.
The four members who voted I on effective comprehensive plan, which was all of us. Um, you know, we didn't feel that was a big increase that was being asked for.
Yeah, like respectful of the residential quarter. But we're saying it's a four point four square foot.
Yep.
Increase. Yeah.
And so the final now is the recommendation to the planning board. And so the statement would be, we recommend that the zoning board of appeals, I know I said planning board, recommendation from the planning board to the zoning board of appeals. We recommend that they grant this variance. So it's the affirmative statement, we recommend they grant this variance. All right. So all in favors or let's line up the votes. So all the I, who votes I?
I. I.
I.
It's five. And any nays? Nay?
Okay.
And no abstentions. Right? I think that's the head count. All right. And then obviously those arguments follow logically on what we are. So thank you for the drawings and the renderings. And good luck with the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you, Chairman Walsh. Back, uh, gosh.
Like following Tom Brady.
I hope he's, I hope he's watching and he'll like that. I apologize. I'm sorry. I'm, uh. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Okay. Next up is under, last item under new business is the recommendation to the ZBA for twenty-five and thirty-three South Fagan Ave. This is a recommendation for a ZBA for a lot line adjustment. The project lead for this is Mr. Laflamme. And we have a couple representatives from the applicant here tonight.
Excellent. Um, go ahead.
I, I would actually defer to you if you wanted to give us any sort of insider updates on this separate application for a lot lined adjustment. However, an understanding that it is participating with the extension of twenty-nine, thirty-nine hundred State Street for parking.
Sure. Uh, for the record, my name is Devin Dickinson.
Hold that, hold that down a little bit, the microphone.
Yeah, was he, it was just.
Is that on?
Can you hear that? Is that on?
Yeah.
Okay, now.
Uh, for the record, my name is Devin Dickinson with CHA. I'm here tonight with Vincent Salvani from the Matthews Group. Uh, so I will try to keep this tailored specific to the variance we are requesting. Um, so for a little background, we originally proposed this as all three lots as parking. We didn't need a variance for that. Uh, at the request of the board, we did retain the house at thirty-three South Fagan. At one point there was discussion, and this could have been in two thousand and twenty-three in that original discussion of keeping the lot at thirty-three narrow. And I think the intent there was to compromise between saving the house while also allowing uh, us to maximize our, our parking area. Um, so we have the, the original plan that we submitted with all three lots as parking, we netted about ninety spaces. In the current proposal we have, we are at sixty-eight spaces, about a twenty-five percent reduction. If we, we did a little exercise, we did an eighty-foot wide lot. If we adhere to this eighty-five foot lot width, we are reduced to fifty-three spaces. That's a forty-two percent reduction in parking from the original plan and a twenty-three percent reduction from the current proposal. So from our standpoint, we've come to the board with a proposal, you know, our ideal proposal, which didn't require any variances. Um, you know, through that process and a lot of other, other aspects to it, um, and the request of the board, you know, we've maintained and saved this house at thirty-three South Fagan and our feeling is that is not a self-imposed, you know, hardship on ourselves. You know, this is us trying to work with the board while also trying to salvage this project as much as possible. And to just touch on some of the, um, you know, requirements of a variance, you know, this variant specific to this house width, whether it's fifty or eighty feet wide, is not going to have an undesirable effect in the neighborhood. Um, you know, this lot being fifty foot wide, we have a fifty foot wide lot at twenty-five South Fagan. All the lots on South Amherst are twenty-five feet wide. Uh, I think it's important to note that we did meet all of the other criteria for depth and area and all those types of things. Um, and lastly, you know, we've taken considerable steps in the project itself, but again, specifically to this lot, it will not have any environmental impacts as well. So for these reasons, I think we feel that, you know, our request is justifiable. So.
Um, I'm not sure if we should pull the comments in from, uh, public hearing in that this is specific to a lot line adjustment request and our recommendation to the the, uh, zoning board. Um, however, if anyone on the board feels differently, I, I'd wanna ask if anyone wanted to bring up any comments that were made for this particular application.
So I think that the the public hearing was specifically for the special use permit. And those comments are for that one. I know that these are in lockstep and that both of them are going together, but the focus on this should just be the lot line adjustment recommendation to the ZBA.
Let's all be consistent with, with that. Good advice, Chair. I agree.
Yeah. And, and, and just one request. So in perfect line with that, right? Just one request, Laura, I think you can either put them in the minutes, what was emailed, or you can email them out like you've done before. Just.
They'll be both, actually.
Yeah. So when we come to discuss the special use permit, the public comment will carry some weight. The other thing is Laura, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask it here at this point. How many letters were sent out? You know?
Yeah, so we I could, I can.
It's obviously more than two, right?
Oh, yeah. No, I can connect remotely into my computer and tell you the exact number, but it'll take me a second. Um, we do a two hundred foot radius. It's verified by Sims. Um, and it goes, uh, disconnected internet mapping system and it goes out ten days prior. So it's rare that they're not delivered in time.
I, I don't think you need the exact number, Laura. I think what you just said confirms it, right? So, so the houses on Amherst, the houses in Fagan.
But so South Fagan has a huge right of way. I, I think that any house except for the house directly across the street is gonna be beyond two hundred feet. And actually, I mean, if you think about it, yeah, you're probably only gonna get three houses on South Fagan with two hundred feet. Every, I mean, every adjacent house on Amherst should have been notified. Yeah.
This is from the property boundary, so this would also include thirty-nine hundred State Street as well, correct?
Correct. Yeah, it's from the entire, it, it goes thirty-nine hundred State Street, um, you know, fif- uh, fifteen, twenty-three and thirty-three, the boundaries of all of those combined.
Yeah. Okay.
And the only thing that I did wanna mention about separating the items is yes, I think that all of the special use permit stuff should go in the in that discussion. But if you're just looking at this as a lot line adjustment with a vacant lot and, and a residential lot, it doesn't make sense. We talked about that before. So you do, you are pulling in the boundaries of the special use permit on your discussion with this.
And at the bottom line, this would take a conforming residential lot and non-conforming. And I have a big issue with that. It would it would make the property less appealing, especially if you're going to have car lot parking really within like ten feet of the driveway of the property. So I cannot support this.
Do you feel that keeping the house outweighs your concern? Because if the house wasn't there, we wouldn't have this concern. That's what we're trying to accomplish. I'm.
You would prefer to take the house down. I understand.
No, no, and I agree. And I, and I completely understand that the board.
There's a house there. It has not been condemned by the town for any reason. It's a residential lot. It is partly in the residential zone. It's not all the C H. And I can't support taking not only is it conforming, it actually has a little extra space. I can't accept taking that down to non-conforming and having car lot right adjacent to it.
So, 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 so Leslie, I'm, I'm, just to be clear, you're talking about it being non-conforming because of its pre-existing non-conformance on the south side, correct? What?
Normally when we have a lot that's mixed, residential takes precedence. I don't know if we're doing it differently now, but in the past we make it, we try to keep it conforming to the residential requirements. And this takes it out of that.
By the width, not being eighty feet.
And the width is determined by the lot.
Okay, so, so that's the question about that. You're talking about the fifty-foot frontage that will remain on the new lot.
But.
To me, it's just untenable.
Okay, so everyone's clear on this. The single-family residential, it's not an approved use in the CH district. So what we're using is we're using the most stringent, which is R two, correct? For the lot width.
The part of the lot is in R two.
Right. Correct.
In it. But that isn't. By this one.
Yep.
So Laura. Very well, just to let you know.
Yeah, my microphone was not very clear.
So, so just for clarification, could you kind of ju- generally point to the area of thirty-three that's that's in R two?
Yeah, it's way up here. It doesn't even look like he's got the zoning on here, but the corner, it's just this tiny corner up here isn't.
Right. So, so the key thing is that the movement of this lot line is all within the CH part of.
Yes, it is.
Right?
Because there's some R two.
But because there's some R two, we could give precedence to the R two.
Can I donate that corner? Away from, you know, a lot line?
No.
Could we lot line that?
Yeah.
That's not even the issue.
Well, I just, I'm trying to get it all in the CH to, to simplify it. That's all.
Yep. So for, for anyone to be in favor of this lot line, one argument is that the, the movement of this lot line is solely within the CH zone. Granted, it's on a property that has a small portion that is R two. And then that gets us to the stringency of the condition on the fifty-foot. Right? That frontage happens to be again, all in the CH zone also.
Yeah. And I mean, having a portion in the R two maybe makes that easier. We don't know what the requirements would be for a pre-existing non-conforming CH. Like, we'd probably, I mean, Devin actually, when he submitted it, submitted it under R two because it's a single-family zone. So.
So, so I think, I think why I'm saying what I'm saying, and I think I can speak for Chairman Dr. Pinto, I'm just trying to get the bullet argument straight for what we're gonna say to the ZBA. Right? Regardless of how this vote goes. Um, clearly this seems that it's going to be a non-unanimous vote. So we just wanna make sure that we get, I mean, you're still the chair. I'm still acting like I'm.
That's fine.
It's okay. Sorry. You, uh, right? We just wanna make sure that we get it straight, right? So there's an argument here for the lot line movement is on CH. The frontage is on CH. There is an argument to be said for a portion being in R two. But I know as a single board member, based in just that percentage, where it is, et cetera, I don't see that as a big argument for not approving or not recommending that this lot line be granted. Just.
I think the damage to the existing property is considerable and I cannot support it.
Yeah. Right. So that'll be the, we'll articulate that argument in the dissent too.
May, may I offer some perceived mitigating factors as the owner of the lot that's going to be adjusted? And doing all of this and hopefully get, getting the approval prior to what happens next with the house, any reduction in the value to that house only affects me and my investment in that house. So it, that, that doesn't help me. I'm, I'm trading one for the other, number one. Number two, the is another, in, in whether it's considerable or not, and forgive me if it's not, but the lot at fifty-foot widths, if you do an overhead shot, matches the lots on Amherst across from it, which I presume are also non-conforming? Or no, are they not in the CH?
Um, some of them are in R two and some of them are in CH. Yeah.
So I mean, there's from a characteristic standpoint, I don't think it sticks out from a from a penalty, penalty type of factor, the penalty is only on me. And then if I market that house after all this is done, whoever purchases that house will understand what they're getting and the condition, you know, of the lot in comparison to the dealership. So I think going through this entire process, each time we've come to the board, the board has had concerns. I believe we've reacted in a way where as of right now, one hundred percent of the compromises have come from us. This last piece allows us to deliver the compromise that the board requested. And, and, and Mr. Khan, what you did earlier, um, with, with, uh, with each of the board members, I would appreciate because we're here asking for that recommendation to the ZBA in exchange for giving up our original project. We believe that what we have offered is a significant investment on our part to make that happen. We believe that this project allows us to make the improvements that we all love on the existing dealership. And so if I don't have your support and there is something I can do outside of that variance, I would like to gain your support. Ask me now and, and tell me where you stand. That's that's what I'm asking.
Again, I find myself in an awkward position of repeating questionable behavior and recommending things that are not for us to recommend. So stop me if that might sound as such, but an irregular shaped lot with proper frontage in the front, but not in the back, is that the compromise that the applicant is unaware of, but might be asking for? What would this board do if it had eighty feet in the front but not all the way to the back? In an effort to retain more parking spaces, which is the goal of the applicant? No one has to answer that, but if that, he's willing to do something, um, I still would stand on I, my opinion is that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It is finding a balance between CH and R two. The percentage of the property that is R two is small. And there are a lot of other examples of houses that size, that amount with that lot that, um, the owner of the property now has the right to make the request for. And we, I feel I'd, I'd recommend that to the zoning board. They have to make their own call, right? But those are the reasons why. He's the owner of the property. We asked him. we gave a very clear message the last time we voted on what was necessary. So, um, I think it's on us to find a way. So if there's another, if there's another way, let's talk about it. If someone thinks, thinks there is another way.
Well, traditional legal advice is, Ben, it is never the planning board's job to design a project.
I know. I know. Although all of us have participated in that in one way or another. So I'm, I'm just putting it out as an example.
I, I just wanted to put one thing on the table in terms of comprehensive plan. So on statement, page two out of six, right? Laura, I think that's the extent to which the comprehensive plan talks about this area, right? Would you summarize there? Right? C H residential, it's acknowledging the C H nature.
Finding a balance.
It's acknowledging that, you know, that residential is there, right? I just want to make sure that.
Think I'm not, we don't have a full packet because I don't always put all of the pages through, but um, where we explored the comprehensive plan the most was in the original recommendation on retaining both houses. That has the most comprehensive review of the comprehensive plan. And I don't know if you remember, but it even cites page numbers. So I would say, no, there's more than just one statement. I think that we cited four to five different pages in the comprehensive plan in that original recommendation. It's just not in your packet this time. It would be in the packet from last time.
So could we look at that? This, I mean, can I propose?
Is this considered in the Stanford Heights area generally, Laura?
Um, the Stanford Heights Fire District. Yeah. Yeah. It, it, the Stanford Heights neighborhood.
Neighborhood.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, so you're saying it's in the previous package?
Yeah. See if I can pull it up.
I have a quote from comprehensive. Stanford Heights is well known for its commercial areas.
Yeah, it's, that's definitely in there. I think if I can pull up the old packet, there's multiple pages that are cited.
So Stanford Heights neighborhood is mostly dominated by State Street and Balltown Road in the surrounding areas that bisect that corner. So in an effort to help Mr. Laflam here and, and where I stand, I, I don't disagree with any of the proposals that you have in this as far as lot line adjustment. At some point, one of these parcels is begun, is going to become a trapezoid. That's just the way the land is, the curve, the curve of the road. And having some sort of lot line that starts at 80 feet and snakes back to some other reduced amount to squeeze parking in more of an angled trapezoid, I don't think is, is probably what the answer is, but because there are other lots that are nearby that are 50 feet, it's, it's maintaining consistency with what's there in the neighborhood. We look at other subdivisions that squeeze those way down or they become too much smaller. They try to subdivide. I understand that. But in the C N district and considering that there's just a smidgen in R two, you know, it's, it's hard for me not to vote for this to make a recommendation to the Z B A. When we get to the discussion points on the actual next portion of the project, we're going to talk about, I have a differing opinion on that. So at least where I'm sitting right here for the lot line adjustment for Z B A, I would, I would be supportive of this because I don't think that there's enough information in here that would find some sort of detriment that I can see.
Thank you.
I understand that there's, there's, there's a house coming down, but that's not part of this lot line adjustment request.
That's not what I've been talking about. I've been talking about the lot line adjustment specifically. Normally when we re-subdivide an area, the goal is to make lots as conforming as possible. This goes in the opposite direction. Plain and simple. Very, very simple geometry. And I will note also that we are in the process of reviewing the comprehensive plan and rewriting it. We have a governor who is pushing for more affordable housing. It is something that the comprehensive, comprehensive plan committee has recognized as a deficiency in the town. We don't have enough of it. So we're going to, so as proposed, we would let the car lot come almost to the driveway of this property. That is one of the few affordables in town.
So
Does it make sense?
I was going to say this during the recommendation, but I'm going to state it now because it might be perceived as another way to improve the affordable housing situation is going to. It's a smaller lot. Might be a little bit more affordable as a result of that.
You've got to consider that you're not going to want to be next to the parking lot.
Uh, all I'm saying is now that you or I can determine that, but you can, you can say that you might make an argument that this make it, this might make it more affordable.
I'm a real estate, Brett. I don't have a license. I've never wanted to become a Realtor or even an agent. I grew up with real estate. This does harm the value of the lot for residential purpose. Real simple.
I think we're on the same page. Harming the value of the lot is making it more affordable.
I think we have to try to strike a balance between, I understand what you're saying, Leslie, but I think you have to take a look at the context and not simply the fact that it's a, that it's all only residential. It is a budding commercial property. It always has. And I, I agree that I think we're not reducing it to something that's much smaller than anything that's surrounding it. It is in conformance with a lot of the lots around it. And, you know, in the journey to try to find a compromise, you know, is it ideal? It's not. But I think given the circumstances and its location to start with, that the, the request for the lot line adjustment is not out of line.
To give a path of the width for additional parking, I think goes too far. And there is another path in there. Not my job to propose it.
I do just want to make sure, and Rob can jump in here when we're discussing this, that we're not actually comparing it to the proposal where one of the house, where both of the houses were being taken down as a compromise. That was a split vote, but this board voted that project essentially down to the town board. So it's not, uh, I just want to make sure that we're, we're being really clear on the record when we're voting. That that is not a compromise with the plan that came forward. It definitely addresses what you guys talked about on that vote, but it's not necessarily like a
illegally new project.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm glad you said that, Laura, right? Because at no time, I know I was never involved in any discussion that would have been a discussion that reached between the planning department and Matthew Skia or the planning board and Matthew Skia, like we've done in certain other projects, right? Once there before us for site plan, et cetera. We didn't have any negotiations or discussions on compromise, right? So there's nothing presupposed here. We're looking at these cleanly.
We listened.
Right.
To the board members who voted us down. This is our response as a.
Right. So that I understand, right? You, you did something in accordance with what it is that you learned from that first experience, right? So. Yeah. But thanks for the clarification on that.
No worries.
So, so, I mean, since we're given a roster, right? At least for the lot line adjustment, based on the arguments of, and I just reviewed the comprehensive plan again, currently as it exists, not the new one. Right? Because that doesn't affect us now. Given the commercial zoning of this plot, given that the R two of it is small, I see the effect in a comprehensive plan to be none. And I see the suitability views given the other Amherst lots and the other lots in the area. And also the fact that it's judgment based on that little bit of R two that we're establishing on 80 foot frontage. Right? On the commercial, it's purely commercial on that side. I would vote for suitability of use and I would vote for the Z B A to recommend the variance, right? And it's the owners, the applicant's burden to prove, you know, hardship and otherwise to the Z B A. That's where I'm standing on this one.
Yeah, I'm having a really hard time finding the multiple citations. I know that what Devin said is in the plan. I've read that.
Laura, I went and I looked at the plan just now. I word searched it. I scanned all the locations. It doesn't really offer us anything that, that tells us one way or the other.
Well, we actually cited page 77.
Let's, let's.
That the State Street Boarder should maintain its low density development that doesn't overwhelm and consume the adjacent residential neighborhoods.
Yes.
So there are at least two sections there.
Right. But I, I think even that statement.
I can only find those two. I do remember the one that Devin said too. Yeah, that's all I can find.
As proposed, the lot line would be deficient as far as providing adequate buffering between both the driveway and more importantly, the house.
Well, are we prepared to vote? Then let's.
I don't know. There were a couple of the planning board members that didn't articulate, so. I don't know if you guys want to wait for a vote for that or.
I mean, this is, this is the, the time to have the discussion.
Yeah.
If, um, Ms. Gomes or Mr. Bill and Cal, who wanted to? Oh, no, you're actually.
Yeah, you're actually, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's right. Here.
So it's just, I'm sorry, just.
One more, at least one more. Yes. So.
I will say that, um, I think at the last meeting, I, I did articulate that I'm never in favor of reducing housing, but I think in this case, with the zoning, it makes sense to me with, with how the, the property is set up. Um, I don't think, I, I basically with all the sentiments that are expressed, I do feel that I think in my expressing, you know, to be against it, the last meeting, just because, just for the sense of saying that I don't want housing, it also doesn't make sense. And I don't think that it's a a hill that I'm, I'm willing to die on. So I, I do feel that, you know, with, with what was discussed tonight, that it, that I would be in favor.
So we, we, we'll vote on it. Um, those three conditions, I'll, I'll preface by saying that the boundaries comment that our, our planner indicated, I interpreted as that this enables a project for special use with the highlighting points of life safety, a walk, a sidewalk that doesn't currently exist that we've heard the neighbors would really like to see. Retention of residential elements, right? A tree, many trees, more buffering. Um, and that the lot line is enabling all of those things at the crux of this request. The owner owns the lot. They're making the request. We're responding and voting on the lot line. I also feel that the lot line will, well, we'll just stop there. So all in, so comprehensive plan, consistent with the comprehensive plan. We're voting affirmative. All in favor or feel that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
I don't know. I think it has a negative effect because it's creating a non-conforming lot.
And all in favor of the use of this, what is, what is the actual?
Suitability views.
Suitability views for the lot line adjustment.
Suitability of a lot line adjustment in this space, all in favor of, say aye. I say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay.
And recommendation at the Z B A?
Okay.
Yeah. So let's get, yeah. So let's, so let's make sure we put in the arguments.
Each basis.
Yeah. So the, the, the effect on.
Make sure you're talking to your microphones, Laura.
So the effect on the comprehensive plan is that the vote was six to one, that the lot line adjustment is keeping in character with other congruent neighborhood lot sizes. It is not excessively reducing it, nor is it creating any type of flag lot or a non-conformity. It's a, it's a shift on the property lines. The dissenting vote from Ms. Gold is stating that that's going to affect affordable housing and not consistent with the comprehensive plan. Correct? Okay.
Yeah, it would lower the value of the remaining lot. Meaning property.
All right.
Because it's residential use and it makes it non-conforming.
So suitability of.
So suitability of use with the vote from six to one. The summary is that it's shifting a lot line. It remains the same residential, residential use currently that the configuration is. And the dissenting vote from Ms. Gold was based on the same reasoning for number one.
Basically.
Okay. All right. And then I'll just keep moving this forward.
Sure.
The, the recommendation, Mr. Laflam on the proposal to ask for the 30 foot reduction on the street frontage. Your recommendation to the Z B A is?
To approve.
To approve that. Okay. All right. All in favor of the recommendation for the 30 foot lot line adjustment, state by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Ms. Gomes, what was your vote?
Aye.
Okay. Again, uh, six to one recommendation. And I would say that the recommendation is based on the summary of the effective on the comprehensive plan and the suitability of use that we had. And then Ms. Gold, would you like to clarify again, anything in addition to that vote?
I think we have to recognize that the land's going to exist beyond our lives. And I think this harms it into the future by making it non-conforming with our zoning, by making it, by putting the parking so close to the property. In particular, not just the border, but it's almost up to the driveway and the driveway is very close to the actual structure. And I think that harms it in perpetuity.
Okay. All right. So again, that's also something that's in the sketch plan development that could change in the future, depending on the next discussion items that we, that we have. So this recommendation will go to the Z B A. It will be on the next docket, correct, for June?
I don't think we can get it on June.
Okay.
I can try, but we already have something like 10 cases and they're already five days past the deadline.
Okay.
So it's likely going to have to go to July.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
The same is true for Heritage. Yeah.
Procedure question. We referred it to the historical committee now.
Yeah.
If they come back with a finding that would give us reason to reconsider, would we have that opportunity?
Not for the lot line adjustment.
Would that information be made available to the Z B A?
If it comes in in time and they request it.
Okay.
Okay, that closes out, um, the recommendations of Z B A for 25 and 33 South Vagan Ave. We are going to move on to discussion items. Next up is 3900 State Street Site Plan Application for Requiring an Area Variance and Special Use Permit for a Building Expansion, New Signage Merging with 25 and 17 South Vagan Ave and the expansion of the parking lot. Mr. Laflam is the project lead. And move to the updates.
Yeah. So I guess I would just start with the comments we've received. They were certainly focused more on the broader project than the lot line. Just to repeat some of the things that I had heard. From a neighborly perspective, there, there were some very specific complaints of, of, um, what it's like being a neighbor to the commercial use of, of the business inconsistencies that I heard were that there were no large audio paging systems that are broadcast. She seems to have a different experience with that. The lighting, we do know the lighting is retro. It, it's going to be addressed in the new design. And it, the new design will hopefully address those lighting concerns. They, they certainly were mentioned in, in your proposal and, and what the, uh, the new project layout for the whole campus, um, will look like. Uh, the sidewalk, um, the, the bus stop, you know, those types of things I'm seeing in this project as it means to improvement. The, the use of that side road for delivery should, should be reduced significantly with the new flow. That there is no flow through the lot today. Um, so in general, I, I mean, really grateful that we got the public to, to come out and speak and that I'm hearing a lot of what we wanted and what the public spoke about on your first application being addressed in, in your second application. But maybe you can speak to some of those things because maybe the lighting isn't good enough and maybe the sound that is being heard should be looked at, you know, with the new design. Um, the practice of looking for cars with, you know, the remote peepers, I, I, I don't know how that could be addressed, but it was said, you know.
It's been, it's addressed in all of our dealerships.
It's been, it's addressed in all of our dealerships. Um, we don't allow it. It's lazy. We, we will do our best. To enforce it. It's not something that, you know, it's a common practice in car dealerships, but there's no reason to set off a panic alarm. With a lot that has everything visually in sight. Uh, it happens from time to time. I'm not going to say it doesn't. During the meeting, I was texting the general manager and, and telling him that I'm not here enough to know. That it's not going on and I don't want to find out via a public hearing that we're not adhering to policies that we have within our company. So he said he would address it tomorrow. Um, I was there today in the store. Someone paged on the intercom, which. I'm not there a lot. I did not realize we still had an intercom system at the last meeting. I said we didn't use an intercom system. I was incorrect. So I asked him. They're attached to the building. They're not out in the lots. Certainly they wouldn't be in the new lot. But there's got to be a volume switch. So tomorrow morning, we're going to go in and turn it down. We use cell phones for the most part. We're going to address that. And, and we want to be respectful and we want to be, we, it is a mixed use. We don't deny that. Put yourself in that neighbor's house. How would you want to be treated? We operate our business that way. We miss at times. And we're wrong at times. I was dead wrong about the intercom system. So now I'm going to do something about it. I know the horn thing happens. At all the dealerships and it just becomes someone who can't find a car and they hit the panic button and then they go find the car. There's, there's a better way to do that. So we will work on that. Lighting that she talked about, um. I think we'd have to, you know, we'll look at that in the plan, but I honestly don't think those are our lights that she's seen. Uh, and then some of the stuff that she was addressing was actually town issues that I can't help with. But anything that, anything that's related to Matthews Auto Group. My position in the company is to make sure that all of our dealerships. Act in a way that is cohesive with how Matthews operates. We try to be different. One thing we do is we listen, we react. We're intentional about trying to be different. So I commit that to you publicly that I will do that and you can hold me accountable for that.
Yeah. I mean, we, we could reserve the right to add certain of these things that we heard from the public as, as conditions. Sure. Right? I mean, there's always going to be an enforceability issue, but definitely lighting is, I think, something we'll work through as we work the site plan. Done that. We do that. We'll need to see lumens. We'll need to see, right? Being conscious now of what we've heard from a neighborhood. We might, you know, the. As you've stated before, there isn't a necessity for an intercom system, right? So maybe we can, you know. Talk about that conditions, maybe something with business hours, that kind of thing. One question I have, so. I think I recall this, but maybe you can reiterate it. This has to do with the delivery, timing and location of the truck. So just to remind the board myself. Right now, what is the plan and the current design is depicted for the trucks to actually deliver? How are they going to drive in, drive out? Yeah, it's the, it's the mic thing, but.
You can, you can point, you could speak.
Like the rock.
Got to get you a laser pointer. We should get a laser pointer.
So. Right now, there's only a single entrance and exit off of State Street, right? To reiterate that. This new driveway is designed such that they could enter or exit in either direction here, and that is why this is wider. This driveway is specifically tailored to allow that vehicle to come in and out. They cannot travel that way. There are weight restricted roads. I think they could maybe get around the neighborhood, but at that four-way stop, they can't get around. So it has to be in this. Cube, let's say, that they can enter.
So, so as a designer, architect, engineer right now, if you, do you have a preference? Or can you make a recommendation that would be a one-way? Recommendation that can be made. So I'm thinking here signage markings, right? Do we want them turning off a state street or do we want them turning off of Fagan? I would think. Go ahead. You, this is yours.
So, so there's pros and cons. This, this is difficult to pull out of, right? If you're familiar with it, it's high here. There's limited visibility. So it is difficult to pull out of there. However, if you pull in off of State Street, the lights are going to face this way. I envision coming down this road and in, you unload your cars and you come out. Do you know, Vinny, do they generally head south out of here?
I don't know.
Don't know.
Uh, well, I can tell you.
They do today, right? They have.
When they're, when they're unloading, they're facing that way right now. For the displeasure of the board.
Yeah.
So I imagine.
Let's, let's be clear. They're facing which way? I'm sorry. We're like, which way would the headlights be pointing when they're?
Yeah, correct.
Facing south.
Yeah, but they're unloading right there on State Street.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, you know, as, as we all know, obviously this is a huge part of the project, right? They don't have a good place to load and unload. Um, you know, they've been trying to do it off, off the main road, but really this is, this is the solution. And, and this is the way I envision it. And like I said, it's mostly for the lights not to face out that way. And they can come in and out and on State Street. And most of the board, I just, that's the way I.
Rational safety standpoint. Right? 10 car carrier. To pull off of State Street into the upper lot in that upper section where there could be. People coming out of their cars, walking across, they'll have much more time and visibility coming from the other side of the lot coming around. They'll be going slower. So I, I envision it the same way for that reason.
So when we get, if we get to the point of a, of a final plan, that, that we're going to need to see the way finding the arrows, the direction. I've been working closely. I've always known that was the path, but it's good to make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. That clarified because those are the elements that were.
Yeah, I'm just trying, yeah. Yeah. And I'm just trying to reflect what we heard from the public. Laura, I don't mind if you can zoom in. I mean, I can, I'm doing it here. I could see it, but just for the record and for the entire, so. The neighbor that came to the planning board, right? Their home is the house that's shown there. I think that's 25 South Fagan, right? And that neighbor owns a driveway that's that big driveway in the northern side of the screen there. Made very clear those barriers are not there. I think in the most recent Google map, which is 2022, they're not there.
Yeah, we're 25, 24.
Yeah, we're 17. Yeah, that's right. 24, 24. I'm sorry. It is. Sorry. I got the odd numbers and even numbers mixed up. And then her other driveways on the south side of that house.
Correct.
Right? Okay. So right now. The proposed pathway for a delivery truck. Actually barely crosses. A driveway associated with 24. Right?
And that's by design.
So right, I, I just want to make clear. For the record again. Um. So the one last thing, the one other thing, so I guess if a holler gets there in the middle of the night, they just, they can get there in the middle of the night and just drop. Like who's there to receive it? They just.
There's a, there's a process. They, they leave us the keys in the night drop. And then we have a gentleman that comes in in the morning, checks the night drop, goes out, takes all the cars and. Checks them in, gets them ready and positions.
And that happens right now on State Street too. Yes.
Right. The, the addition of the new process makes it safer for everyone except. That resident. Because they were dropping off on State Street, which is actually further from her property.
Well, actually she indicated they drop off on Fagan.
They're dropping off.
And the noises are very. I think it will be an improvement then. Based on what she gave us for, for feedback.
And that's third party contracting?
Yeah.
It is illegal for them to park in the center lane of State Street and unload. It's not a board displeasure thing.
It's, it's so unsafe.
It is, but everybody up and down State Street, other dealerships that are not Matthews.
Rob can jump in here, but, and I think that this will make everything safer too. But I think that. The board has to be, I mean, like when we're saying, that's just illegal. Like, I mean, I know Vinny's trying to control it. They just can't be doing that.
Let's just take it up. You've gotten a record of it. We're responding.
That's better.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking about this plan. I'm sorry, Rob.
You're smart. Need to balance two issues. There's a legal issue and a practical issue, right? And the, the legal issue is that it's illegal to unload cars on State Street. And the practical issue is that this Keuna and Skinactivity and Colony don't have. They, they can't spend all the time enforcing that. So. It's going to overflow and to the extent that you can try to solve some of the problem, that's one of the things you need to consider.
Right. Agreed. Um, look, I'll just speak for myself here, right? At no point in time, the legal issue of dropping off on State Street was ever something I was considering. Right? What I'm considering is the fact that. Any kind of activity of dropping off a car anywhere on State Street is just not safe for the entire, for pedestrians, for traffic on State Street. In a, right? So that's just what it is period, right? If, like I said, I'll tell them again, right? Off the chief coach and hears about it, right?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that.
Yeah. So I, I'm not acting on a legal.
I only said that.
I'm not trying, yeah.
It was my, it was my statement and I stated it because it was a no brainer to me that it would be safer to get those trucks off of State.
Safety is the key thing for me as a planning board member, the legality of the issue. There's another division within the town that deals with that, right? I'm not going to help or hurt a client from. Breaking or not breaking the law, right? That's, you know, maybe it said that too generally, but whatever. Okay. So the key thing is getting the feedback from the residents who visited, right? It seems like what you're going to be proposing here. From a safety perspective, it makes things better overall, right? Activities like unloading of cars and happening in the main thoroughfare. We talked about the driveway location. When we get to it, we got to give some consideration to what we can do. I know there's no control you have over when, at what time, a day or night, the truck gets there. But we're probably going to have to do something. Right? I'm not sure what it is, but you can put in your thoughts to, to shield. The neighborhood. From the noise or other negative impacts associated with following through in this plan. I don't know what that answer is, but. Let's hear it. And if there is an answer, there is. If there isn't, there isn't, we should discuss it.
Sue, did, is, I saw that you raised your hand. Is this related?
Yeah. Yes. So, um, in this, um, new access. Vote here, um, you did say that it was two, a two-way street. Um, how, what? I guess, um, what guardrails are there to prevent a truck from going in and facing the neighborhood? If it's two ways and they can pull into whatever is convenient. They, you know, they can, they can still have the same problem exists.
Okay. Yeah. So, um. Similar to the conversation we just had. Here's, here's how we can address that in that there's no one company that we can call. And say, here's the plan. They're different. They're independent shippers. But there is a group of them over time that we will educate. How, that being said. From a trucking standpoint and watching this happen, I feel like they're going to gravitate toward this because this is an easier. And smarter way to unload a car.
I mean, the affirmative thing you could do is the appropriate signage.
Yes.
On your property, right? So that's what I was expecting that.
We've discussed wayfinding and being required.
And it's for the right reasons. We want it and it just has a requirement, but it makes sense because we. Flow matters to us. Efficiency matters to us. Safety matters to us.
Yeah. So, so just understand procedurally, right? So. Our next milestone here is a resolution towards a special use permit recommendation to town board.
Well, actually first we need to hear from the zoning board.
That, that, that's right. We need to hear for the lot line. It, it, no, I, I got that part, but when time comes to act on this, if that time comes.
Right.
It'll be, so that means the detail of site plan, we don't have to do it prior to that, right? It's really just a kind of like an approval at this level.
Right. Um, I can give you guys the, like the 10 criteria that you recommend to the town board on special use permit. And a lot of it's use related and neighborhood impact related, traffic related, that kind of thing.
Yep.
Um, site plan would be your stormwater, your lighting. Um, yeah.
Right. Understood. And, and I think we had probably mentioned it, Laura, it might be there in a minute too, that if we can get a little bit of those criteria and the timeline, et cetera, right? We had said we wanted to work it up for this one.
I did that, but I think I forgot to email.
Okay. All right. Sorry.
Yeah, there was a draft of, of what we'll call the parallel approach of the ZBA and the special use permit. There are a decent amount of variables in that though, but it kind of shows what the step-by-step is. Laura, we could probably disseminate that this week for the board members. Say, you could say it's, it's a flow chart, basically. Start.
I'm starting. I mean, I have notes from the past and the, the code, but it would help to just see that. Thing I'm most caring about is just what the criteria is. Just so we keep our meetings and conversations in the context of what the next step is, right? You know. I expect that if this remains favorable throughout ZBA special use permit. We're going to have a lot of discussion of site plan, but I think we can. Leave that. That's why I want to leave that discussion for when it's worked. Right? I just wanted to. Account for what we heard from the resident. I think the arguments, you know, she made were legitimate. So you could start thinking about how we address some of those.
Can I? Excuse me. I'm sorry, Sue. Um, the, uh, the neighbor discussed lights. That seem to be penetrating her house and somebody made a comment that they said they didn't think it was them. Where is you? What do you think? Where do you think that's coming from?
And I can submit that all of our lots actually are lights face toward the dealership and away from her house. I actually had the manager go across the street and take a picture and send it to me. And, and I think there are lights that are on State Street facing down because from his angle, our lights aren't on. And by her house, there's lights shining and I think our.
There's streetlights?
I think there's streetlights. But any that are ours are certainly adjustable. In such a way or shieldable in such a way where we, we have an obligation not to pollute light on the neighbor's house.
Thank you.
I was just going to add, and, um, I hate to harp on it. Um, in the, um, in the list of, um. Actions or, um, requests, can there be signage that specifically says like? Loading is on one, on one street only, meaning they, those, um, transporters would enter. On the, on the, in a way that would not impact the neighbor across the street. Can, is that something that we could do?
You could, yes. You, the planning board has the authority to place conditions on that will mitigate potential impacts that they have addressed. Occasionally the planning board does put a condition in a site plan that is very difficult to enforce, even though we do our best. That might be one of them, but you can certainly put it down for the record. And then if it's a consistent violation, we do have the ability to, um, enforce.
And I have a related question. I believe the town board, assuming this project goes through. The town board could opt to put signage up prohibiting. The carriers from using the side streets beyond the property line of that entrance.
The town board would have the authority to do that.
And they could attach a hefty fine for violations thereof.
They can do that.
But those fines would go to the parking company, right?
They'll go to the traffic company. That's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd encourage that. I think that would help.
Yeah. Um, so, so the last thing before we leave, just again completeness to the board member, to, to the town member, what's? Please, if you could look into that fence issue.
Yeah, in.
The fence on our property.
I started to and the comment back to me was, we didn't know that was our fence. We always assumed it was her fence. So then we'll get some clarity on that.
Okay.
We, we haven't touched it because when we bought it. That was told to us. It's not ours.
So yeah, so there's an answer there. So.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get an answer for sure.
Thank you.
Um, the only thing I wanted to note is that. At the last meeting, I think Andrew had requested that you put the truck. Path on this new site plan drawing, which you said you were going to. And also you were going to add some of the south improve on the south side of South Fagan. You're going to add those improvements to that site plan. I know you were really focusing on the lot line adjustments, so that's fine, but I think we'd see another iteration with some tweaks to this with that comment. And then.
Yeah. And I apologize, Laura. I didn't resubmit that. The plan as it sits right now on my AutoCAD has all the landscaping.
Oh, it does. Yeah.
Okay. And then it's just.
The path drawn.
Un, you know, thaw that one layer and the truck turns on.
Okay, good. Yeah, that's why I asked the first question, not, I didn't, I forgot that we agreed to that, but it, it's a begging question. So I think we need to make that as clear as possible. It's going to impact signage. It's going to impact all those things.
Perfect. That is okay. So. I requested that the planning department do an overlay of where the CN property is currently on State Street. In the town limits and blue represents. The commercial businesses that are there. Your project has the red striping that's showing the extension of where it goes. And then just as a quick clarification. 402 and 406 are where, so just be adjacent to that where Fagan Ave is, that's actually your refurbishing.
Yes.
Area there. So technically that would be, we'd consider that light blue as far as. So what, but what this, what this demonstrates is that if you, if you follow that line. That goes on, on the bottom below State Street, you can. that goes on, on the bottom below State Street, you can see where the commercial zone runs down through. And then this is where your property jumps down and then kinda comes down into, into the residential area.
Does the red line account for the lot line adjustment or is it encompassing all of thirty-three? Yeah, so some of that is gonna, is gonna push back.
Yeah, it'll probably be around where that thirty-eight Amherst line is.
So the existing line is here. So it would be somewhere sort of in the middle of that pink person that's on the south side.
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet down. From that green.
And, and, and so Chairman Deputy, am I, you know, understanding what this was based in request, right? My first reaction to it was that while the, you know, the imaginary line that can be drawn east to west that shows the occupied commercial property. Right? Proportionally, if we get to the right location of where the current proposal is, it kinda proportionally is similar because of the widening of the, the block from Albany Estate there, right? It's not like it's an egregious encroachment into the residential area. Others can have an opinion, that's just mine. All right? Especially if we get, especially if we get the right boundary drawn based on the current application.
What does the green represent?
So there are assessor codes and the legend, it explains them, um, but the green is assessed as vacant. The lighter pink is single-family residential, the darker pink is multifamily residential. Actually seventeen is zoned multifamily residential and then um, blue is commercial. I, not zoned, it's, it's assessed.
So can you zoom back out?
Yeah.
Laura. Because when you just look at that side of, I see what you're saying, Chairman, like it, it, it's a, it penetrates into residential more on that, on that side of state.
But, but you got something similar going on.
But you have something.
Up on like north, north Allendale, right?
Across the street.
And across the street.
The exercise that I was looking for was, and, and I'll be upfront, I mean, I voted against the previous project that, that tore everything down. I'm not a big fan of the other house coming down, so this, this was the exercise I wanted to see so that we could all visually get a good idea of what, I don't wanna use the word encroachment, it's, it's, it's the boundary that you're extending. And to me, encroachment would be intentionally buying up a huge block of something um, for that, but given where that house is and the configuration of the current lot that you purchased, that is, got that notch in it right there. I mean, I can, I can see where that comes. Now, it does go a little bit further than I prefer, but I'm still not a huge fan, but um,
Yeah.
The, so, so what, what this led me to is if we go back to looking at the rendered plan that we had up, and I know that we were talking about the, the refurbishment building there. So if you, Laura, if you could just zoom in between the parking lot that's between the main dealership and the refurbishment building. So each of your exercises, every time you do something, you've reduced the parking. Okay, right? So when you looked at the lot line adjustment, you lost sixteen spaces. So each time you where the row of those three trees are, that runs up on the left-hand side, on your refurbishment lot, you've got a double-deep parking on the left-hand side. If you just pull the picture over to the right tad, Laura, there you go. So even though I think that green space is nice in the line of the sidewalk, I believe that there was a request from Complete Streets to have the trees on the tree strip with the sidewalk inset, correct?
Yes, although the tree council ended up asking for both lines of trees.
Oh, okay, well, anyways, anyways. Where I'm go, where I'm going with this is that there's an opportunity to get more parking closer to State Street where that may help you maybe reduce some of the stuff that's going on for the parking lot up above. You have, you're gonna have to have um, at least one detention basin, if not maybe two on this project, and you're dealing with a slope. So just with my background, I think that that's definitely gonna be a factor in there. You might lose parking spaces anyways. But anything that could be pulled closer to State Street, I think would be a benefit. I mean, the green space is nice. But, you know, the tree-lined street and having the sidewalk a little further away from the road, I would think would be a better benefit. And you might be able to get more parking out of it. Just something to, to consider. Because when you look at like some of the other configurations here, you're going to lose, and I think I counted, there were fourteen spaces with your building expansion, which you're gonna be committed to. And I don't know if any of your refurbishment or what that building's gonna service when you do the full renovation. You know, if there's something that becomes part of that in the future, but again, like I'm, I'm still wrestling with that trapezoidal piece of the parking that goes up further into the neighborhood. And turn it over to you.
Making recommendations tends, tends to happen across the board. Um, I would say this, that if the tree council did give that advice and we could consider that, can you get more specific, Laura? Was it on like a couple, like in, like two feet from the sidewalk to the east and two week, two feet from the west? Is that what they're recommending?
The parking lot and the side, but I mean, those trees are almost on the lot line there, you could certainly move them farther down close to the sidewalk and just have trees on their side. There's plenty of space there.
Um, was that considered?
Since stagger them?
Was it steeper? Does it get steeper there?
Those trees are there solely for the fact that I moved them from underneath the power lines, which on the site visit was determined that we think those are mostly defunct.
Right.
So I just tried to get them out of the power line, so they can certainly be moved closer to the street.
With a second row of parking, as the chairman suggested, as a recommendation.
See where the trees are? You have, you have double debt, you have double deep parking on the left-hand side of your
So go, go across the street.
See, you have, you stack parking there.
Double?
But, and then move the trees, make a wider tree strip. So there's power lines that run up that side. No.
But can you, does this project allow for grading up with a barrier wall to do that?
It may, I have, I'll have to look at the grades i- in the grade change there and know it is a little bit steep and obviously we have to work within that right-of-way boundary.
Add to the comment that Donnie may not approve our recommendation. If this is something that's suitable and is an option that you considered and didn't shoot down, then you ought to look at that, right? Cause how many spots?
I think it's something we could definitely consider.
Yeah.
It, it has its own issues, but I think it's something we could definitely consider.
Just so we're clear on, like, I hate this conversation because I don't want my board trying to send a message that they'd approve something that's not before them. So to the extent that this is brainstorming, I'm okay with it. Please don't take away from this that any one of those people who are making proposals speaks for the other members in the board. So I, in general, I'm for trying to find something that works. But just take it for what it is, which is, we're, we're trying to brainstorm too.
Sure, understood.
Just to recap, my point is, is that I think concentrating as much parking close to State Street is a, is a better benefit.
As long as we don't lose the residential mix balance, which that green space does afford. And
Yeah.
The traffic calming part, like that's a, that really does make a difference. And Laura's done a lot of opportunity training with us about that kinda stuff.
Generally, when I design, I try to incorporate as much green space as possible. I think to the end user, it's a, it's a much better product. You know, we'll have to look at it in balance, right? If we can move the parking ten or fifteen feet, does that offset losing the green space between, you know, the two parking areas? Um, you know, we can look at that.
I'll just note, I would want some green space visible from State Street and all. But I worry far more about buffering to the residential than buffering from your own business across the street.
Yeah, I, I, I think my only concern and, and the only reason I'm slightly hesitant is I just wanna look at it from a design perspective.
Of course.
You know, we were out there, you walk up that hill and is it practical to really get a wall out there and then what's that gonna look like? But it's definitely something we'll look into.
So I, I think getting that criteria for what we need to address specifically and especially use permit. And I, I, I mean, I don't know if it's cart before the horse, if we have it on the agenda for the next meeting, if they haven't gone to the ZBA yet, but.
I think that'd be okay, cause we only have one meeting in June and he can send us his updated plans.
Okay.
And we can just look at some of the things that we are issuing, but I defer to the
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a good question.
Yeah. I, I, I guess before you answer Chairman Deputy, you know, so it's impossible to get them on the June ZBA meeting or they just?
At this point, it may very well be, like like, we just have so many cases going before June. I just, and they're already past the deadline. And we, we just finished the denial, like it, it's really, I would say like ninety percent that we can't do it.
Okay. So my only thing is, if we assume that they're not gonna be into ZBA for June, I think for the productivity of the board, we really don't wanna put a long gap in when we're discussing something pertinent versus when we're gonna issue a resolution on the discussion. That's all I was saying.
So what if we disseminate the outline? That we have the ten steps and get that to the boards, we can get familiar with it by the next meeting? Not necessarily, we can keep it on as a discussion item if we notice that there's a good update from the plans. I mean, there's a couple of things we've talked about in previous meetings here. That would probably be good as a familiarity step to keep us up in the loop. If it's just a discussion item and you decide that we wanna keep you on the agenda, definitely have time to do that. If not, we'll just put it under reports and we can file it that way. That way at least we'll all be getting familiar with what it is. Um, for some of us, this is the first time we're recommending a special use permit to the town board, so it'd probably be a good exercise. So everybody think that's a?
I think it's fair.
Agreed.
Again, my motivation behind just any of those comments, I mean, they're strictly around process, freshness of information in our minds when we get to a resolution. And, and just not, we could get into a little bit of unproductive, hey, why don't you do this? Why don't you do that? The applicant's gotta, you've gotta give us your best shot based on the feedback you've got, and we need to work off of that.
Laura, is any of that stuff that you're preparing, like public information, you had mentioned something else aside earlier? And I was gonna try to interject there, but I didn't get a chance. Um, aside from the ten points of criteria, there was something else you were putting together?
The, the timeline.
Oh, the timeline, yeah. Cause that was something I'd be very curious.
Not a state secret.
Nope, not a state.
Yeah, we don't have that criteria in code, right? I think they are.
Yeah, the, it, the flow chart will help you, it'll probably answer the majority of your questions. Okay. Any other items? Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Laura. Did have one question.
If you can squeeze us on the ZBA, like last minute, someone bails.
I'm gonna look at it tomorrow. I can let you know by tomorrow, but I think we've already got something like ten cases. And we have a code interpretation case that I expect to take like about an hour. So even if we do squeeze you on, I mean, we're talking about midnight and in some cases that's, it's just not fair to the board and to the people and the deadline's already been missed. So I will look at it one more time, but it's very unlikely. I know, I know.
Feedback from an arborist on the tree? Or is that not, you're not touching that until they're down the path? Thanks for
Just in conclusion, so, so I'm clear. So we're gonna make some of these revisions to the plans. I'll get those to you, Laura, and then we're gonna come back on for another discussionary meeting.
Yeah, but it's to be determined whether it be June or July, cause to Mr. Khan's point, it might be better for the board to look at the SUP criteria. And then in July, we can be a little bit closer to when we'd be making a decision.
So as a, as a clarification, if you're on as a discussion item, you can present, you can come remotely. We can just get information and discuss it. If not, that information can also be given to us, which is the flow chart, the checklist of things that we have to have for the special use permit. Then at the end of the meeting, the planning department gives an update on reports. Sometimes we talk about open projects, other things like that. So it may save you an evening if there isn't significant upgrades of anything. There's been things from the past three meetings that we've talked about. So if you wanna add those things simply to that plan, you can go ahead and do so. If not, I don't think it's detrimental to not have that on there, just because they're all open topic items that we have. But I think the two pieces of information you wanna see are, um, one thing that's already been prepared and then the other thing that we keep in house.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that, you know, that there's submission deadlines that go along with the meeting, so that we can be ready for it. Okay, thank you.
Good, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes discussion items and moving on to reports. Laura?
I have none unless anyone has questions.
Thank you, Laura.
Okay, open up to commission business for any planning board members?
Just that, um, the Safe on Seven survey was presented at Nisko Day until Nisko Day was evacuated due to weather. Um, they were present at the community tent and I will, everything has been shared with us that we can disseminate. So I wonder if we can share that with the board, Laura?
Yeah, we can.
And, and go ahead.
I've prepared an email blast. I don't know how many of the board has signed up for the email blast and I'm just waiting on the final okay from the supervisor. But I would expect it to go out tomorrow. But if you're not signed up for the email blast, we can add it to the email that I send you guys.
I think it would be good to, I think it'd be good to maybe share it with all the board members, with our official business, with the request that you share it with your own networks, because I just feel the town blast will be good for that population, but I think if we ask the people we know, um, it's not too long, the workshop is informative, you do it at your own pace. Um, but I think the questions would be helpful, especially if you know people that live in that corridor uh, who are engaged, I think we'll get meaningful feedback, um, to keep that process moving.
Specifically Route Seven, Colton?
It's our corridor from St. David's to the, to like the old part, Ring Mazati Building.
Yeah.
Um, and it's really interesting, I think, too, but um, just looking for feedback so that they can then take potential solutions and present them to the public.
So would the email have a link?
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, we can send, I think that's a good idea. I'll just blind copy literally every email list we have.
With the request that you look at it and, and share it with people. I think if one of us asks someone to share it, it's a more likely completion than if it just kinda goes out randomly. And I asked her to update it and create a JPG instead of a PDF so that the link in the JPG would be live and people would click on it.
Okay.
The newer one that she sent, yeah, cause you can just paste it into an email.
I think it's square for Instagram, right?
She was, but if it's a PD, but then she sent us a PDF and the links, the link is not embedded.
Be able to do that, that's
I don't know.
That's out there, but that's okay.
Yeah.
I can do it if I can.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I mean, that's, yeah, Nisko Day is always a rough place to do anything serious.
Yeah, I mean, they're just in their public gatherings, so I think the more we can help them, the better.
Any other commission business?
Okay.
I'll just put in a little plug maybe for the next meeting. Um, the planning office did I'll just put in a little plug maybe for the next meeting. Um, the planning office did get some feedback on the new wetland um, process through the DEC. And we had been saying that we, we were under the understanding that all of Niskuna was considered an urban area per the 2020 census, which has an impact on wetland buffers. Um, we found a little information about, um, the 2690 Balltown Road project for GE Vernova, that they are not in a urban area per the census. So we have a little information on that that we could just share with the board for informative purposes next meeting.
Thank you, Clark. Okay, if there's nothing further, take a motion to adjourn. Moved by Ms. Gold and seconded by Ms. Khan. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned at 9:15 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.